So with that in mind, let's go ahead and get started. Again, for those joining, my name is Dustin Thompson. I'm with the Delaware CR Club. We are live today with Councilman Dave Carter, who's going to give us some introduction about county council processes and how we can advocate for environmental justice in our state and our counties. Dave, thank you very much. Why don't you give a little background on yourself?
Sure. Well, as I'm looking at the screen, at least a few of you know me. You know, I think probably some of your first time encountering me as elected official, but I spent 28 years as a environmental manager in Denrick. During that time, I spent a lot of it managing the coastal programs, did a lot looking at the Coastal Zone Act, Coastal Zone Indicators, Industry, Brownfield Redevelopment, some Superfund cleanup. And then probably towards the end of it, did a lot of work with some of the communities, South Bridge, a little bit in the east side, over in Brown Town, actually trying to deal with environmental justice issues. And since that time, I did retire from the state. I now teach public policy at the university in addition to being a councilman. And along the way between that, I spent some time doing environmental advocacy with Audubon Society and some other groups. So I have a pretty solid background in the technical aspects of environmental issues. Also, a lot of experience civically with the land use process. I have literally been involved with every single update of the Newcastle County Comprehensive Plan since before the UDC was passed in 1997. I was involved back when Ed O'Donnell was the former, was one of the former land use managers before we passed the UDC. So I was pretty familiar with it coming into it. I don't know if you have any questions about my background, feel free to ask them. But with that, what we thought we would do is I want to kind of do this in two phases. I've been talking to some people about navigating that land use process, making sure they knew where the public input points are. So we thought we'd start out, I have a few questions. I'll throw a slide up to get us started, to get a feel for how well you understand the county's land use process. Then I'm going to go through a few slides that I think are important to point out some of the key things to understand about it. And then after that, I like to get into the environmental justice aspect of it and why it's so critical, how important land use is, understanding the origin of zoning. A lot of people don't really recognize or realize, but zoning has, like a lot of our policies, somewhat of a dark history. It was done in many cases to segregate society and some other issues early on. That is not happening so much in zoning anymore, but the problem with environmental justice is we did not go back and correct for the problems that occurred years ago. And we continue to just let them roll on. For instance, in Delaware, our heavy industry zoning has, to my knowledge, never been comprehensively revisited since it was originally zoned in about 1930. And a few things in the state have changed since 1930. So that just will give you a quick background of it. I'm going to share the screen. We'll talk about a few questions. We'll want to have an open discussion on that. That'll give me a better feel for what you guys do and don't know and where I need to emphasize for the land use process, at least the very bare bones basics of it in the county, and use that to set us up to better understand where I think we need to go with environmental justice, which is very timely as we enter into the start of the next comprehensive plan. So I'm going to share my screen. And I don't care how questions come in, interrupt me however you want. I'm used to it from the university. I've got used to teaching on Zoom, whether I wanted to or not this semester. So don't hesitate at all. So let me share that. So what I'm going to talk about, I call it navigating Newcastle County Land Use Lab Earth. And then add on to that considerations for environmental justice. And before we get into, into the thick of it on that question, a couple of questions I want to hear from you about are, what's your experience with land use planning and development in Newcastle County? The good, the bad, the ugly? Do you feel you have influence? Don't you have influence with it? Why do you think you've had that experience if you understand it? Tell me a little bit about what you know about land use planning in Newcastle County and the process? Where the different points are for input, if you knew them? Tell me when you've tried to influence it, whether you've been successful or not. And really, I think a key one for environmental justice is your knowledge on how it is linked in with the state law. So if anybody is willing to, go ahead and, you know, unmute yourself and let's have a little discussion so that I understand where you guys are, what you know and what you don't know about land use. Awful quiet.
So I did make it so you can unmute yourself rather than me unmuting you. But know that if you do unmute yourself and you speak, you will be pictured on both Facebook Live and on the YouTube video that comes after the Facebook Live is over. Go ahead. Anybody that would like to?
Yeah, so this is Willie. So my experience has been limited and probably limited to the more recent discussions around the heavy industry zoning proposal. And I guess my reaction to that experience has not necessarily been positive. I mean, on one hand, you know, there were some forums that people were allowed to hear, you know, what the proposal was. But I did not get a sense that there was an opportunity for real input into the process. It seems like it was a predetermined outcome and the intent of that process was just to inform people of what the outcome was going to be. You know, rather than it being an iterative process where hopefully it would be some kind of reconciliation of what that finished product should look like. So it wasn't necessarily a positive experience for me. I'm anxious to see how this process with the comprehensive plan review goes to understand whether or not that's structured the same way. But, you know, we'll see. So go ahead.
Was that specific to a plan or a development proposal?
Yeah, it was a proposal to modify 19046, you know, the heavy industry application and, you know, remove the special use requirements from that ordinance. And so most of that dialogue was with the Land Use Commission. You know, and I understand that they had a job to do, so to speak. And it seemed to me like their intent was just to carry out that job, you know, irrespective of what the inputs were, but still, I'll just use the term placating residents with the notion that, you know, here's an opportunity for us to talk about it, but really to me, it felt like an opportunity to hear what the outcomes are going to be. So that's my limited experience.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I likewise had very limited experience, but there was a neighborhood project in which there was a developer that wanted to do something adjacent to our neighborhood. And we, just simply looking at the code in advance of interfacing with land use, it looked as though there were plenty of protections for public comment and whatnot. But when we actually got to the presentations, it seemed that they didn't follow all of those steps that they would say. The developer was already very well known, you know, to the folks there. And they would say, well, that isn't really how we do it in Delaware. The Delaware way is X, Y, Z. And so it was very frustrating to us that we came away thinking that the deck was not stacked evenly.
There's some good reasons for that, but I'm going to explain in a few minutes. How about, does anybody know the linkage between the state code and the county? And land use?
I don't know that, Dave. This is Linda Whitehead from Delaware Concerned Residents for Environmental Justice. And so I'm not familiar with that. And I'm totally new to this. So whatever you say will be helpful. Appreciate you doing this. And I just want to give you a heads up that I have to leave a little bit early. So just.
Okay, always call me later.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for doing this.
Anybody else?
Just to, real quick, we had a couple of new people jump on and some people that have jumped on Facebook. On Facebook, you can answer the questions as well. Just put your answers in the comments and I'll relay them here on the Zoom feed. For those that are on the Zoom feed, just know you can unmute yourself. If you're not speaking though, please do keep your mic muted because you will come up on the Facebook video feed. It makes it very hard to edit for everybody after they're done watching. So if you want to unmute and speak, just know you will come up on the video feed.
Okay, well, let me shift and just go through only about five slides, very abbreviated version of land use and how it takes place. And let me start by talking to you a little bit about the linkage between state law and the county law. All of our land use authority is granted to local governments through the state law. When we go to do things like comprehensive planning, we have specific legal things outlined for that plan that have to be addressed at a minimum. And then we have an opportunity to have other things considered if we feel they are locally important. In environmental stuff, it's even more interesting because most of our environmental laws, our air permits, you know, our industrial permit stuff that you're worrying about for environmental justice, nearly all of those laws have a requirement that you get zoning certification from the local jurisdiction as a prerequisite to getting a Denrick permit. And for reasons that baffled me the day I stepped on to council was that everyone seems to think that we're apples and oranges. The state's over there, the county over there, it's either all Denrick's fault that they're not doing it, or the county's not doing it on land use. And these are very specifically written as laws to have that interface take place. And in fact, the State Coastal Zone Act was nothing more than the state getting frustrated over industrial growth in Newcastle County, where they took that zoning authority away, the authority for heavy industry away from Newcastle County many, many years ago. So it's important to understand that. I know Willie talked a little bit about 19046, the controversy over special use. I was very clear on the record why I made all heavy industry a special use. Because if not, it's something I'm going to talk about in a few minutes called by right. And I think that some of those should not be by right because some of them we need to think about whether they need to wither and go away and then identify areas where it may be more possible. So that was a very conscious decision. I know our land use office and some members of council are now claiming it was an unintended consequence. You know, I wrote that legislation specifically with Jake Street. That is a part that I specifically wrote in, having had 30 years of environmental experience in the state of Delaware and understanding the need of zoning. That's why it was put in. It was intentional. And it's why I'm so adamantly opposed to the new ordinance 2008 that's trying to take that away. And I'll go through that in a little more detail. So let me first give you guys, I still have my screen up, don't I? Am I still sharing screen? Let me go back to share screen. Let's see, screen two, here we go. Can you get it now?
Yes, you're good. You may want to enter the presentation mode or something.
Okay, I got it. So you needed a little bit of basics about land use regulation. First of all, I've done, look, I oversaw environmental, federal environmental impact statements for 20 years in the state of Delaware through our Coastal Zone Consistency Program. And I can tell you that zoning laws are extremely complex, very difficult to navigate, very hard to sort your way through. That's why I think lawyers get an advantage and developers get an advantage because they pay the big bucks to get people to read that code, to understand that code. By the time a community tries to engage, you are so far behind the eight ball. It's really difficult to catch up. But what the zoning laws do do is they tell you where you can build, what you can build, what activities can be done on that property, what activities can't be done on that property, and then how you address special circumstances. Okay? The other thing that makes it really complex, anybody who has worked for the county knows that there's a really bewildering array of agencies that you have to deal with and departments. And then when we bring in what should be well coordinated with our state programs, we get this process where, you know, you just go round and round in circles. And it seems to me all too often, I saw it in the state, having worked there for many years, I see it in the county, where we try to have this attitude of pushing off to somebody else and shifting the blame, you know, and it makes it very hard to get things done. The issue that you have, those of you who have had experience, you basically get into it when a development plan is coming, when the bulldozer show up, we call it. That is a problem that occurs with use by right. And that's a really critical term because most of our zoning is used by right in Newcastle County. And if it's used by right, it means that if that developer checks the boxes and meets the code, we legally are not allowed to deny it. Okay? And trust me, they know how far they can go, right to the edge. Lawyers, land design engineers and others to take advantage of every single loophole there is to get it done. Some of them do really good, some of them not so much. And by right is a real problem for environmental justice. Okay? That's why I took it away from the heavy industry and the ordinance. Because by removing the by right status, it basically means that if you can get seven votes in county council, you can say no. By right, land use, if they check the code, by law, we're not allowed to say no. So that's a really important concept to understand. You know, the need to update your zoning, change your zoning and decide when you have by right. So does anybody know what happens when you have a plan that comes in that is a special use and not by right and how it's different? It requires an additional hearing that they have to get approval of where it can be denied. It's not guaranteed that you can do that land use is the big difference. So these are the big places where you can have community engagement, participation in land use in Newcastle County. The first, and I will argue by far the most important part, if you can have meaningful input, that is, is in the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan basically is where we set the vision. And if it's done right, we should be amending our zoning and changing our laws to allow the implementation of that comprehensive plan. Okay, we have started to go to these interim steps in Delaware for master plans. They don't have the same kind of force of law or power as a comprehensive plan, but they're intended supposedly to be rolled up into a comprehensive plan. So we have the one, for instance, in the Route 9 corridor. We're trying to work on one now for the south of the canal, southern Newcastle County and a few other areas. And the idea is they're supposed to look at more specific localized issues and then those will eventually be brought up into the master plan. Whether it becomes a reality is going to really depend on those that have been involved in any of those master plans, what parts they really like and making sure that they're carried through into the comprehensive plan. Then where most of you have had experience with our land use process is in the plan review and approval process. Okay, this is almost always by right. It is frustrating if you're a community and you're trying to stop a bulldozer at this point. If it was zone suburban next to you, there are 15 different scenarios with densities from, you know, five acre lots to about 15, 12 or 15 houses per acre that are allowed in it. And we don't know until a plan shows up. That zoning is really problematic for me. I can't tell my constituents who have a community with land zone suburban as zoning next to them, what might come in next to them. You know, just because of the way our zoning is grouped together. Similar problem that we see with industrials lands, where we collapsed it under the UDC. There used to be, I don't know, eight or 10 different variations of it. One industrial land might be something like a warehouse, which is very different than a refinery. But we tended to group them all together under our zoning and Unified Development Code. So I'm hoping with this comprehensive plan, we will revisit those zoning definitions and break them down to be more transparent and give the public more predictability about what might happen to them. Because if we don't do that, when you get to this plan review process and they're all mostly by right, it's really tough. So when it's not by right, they require some types of special reviews. These include rezonings. When you have to get a rezoning, last night, the first time, and I think a long time, we denied a rezoning in county council after some pretty intense debate for a development that they, small development, 24 houses that they wanted to put in over by Christiana between a historic old school house and a graveyard. I don't know how it was determined to be consistent with the comprehensive plan or the community character, which requires a rezoning. I looked at it, I looked at the code. I just don't know how our land use had determined that, so we turned it down. So when it's a special review, there are mechanisms of which you can actually change the direction of the developments and make them do something very different, something much more in line with the community. And if you can't get that, you just say no. Variances are another one. How strong our word of adjustments is and stuff on variance that we can question a little bit. I can talk about some of the problems. We have boards. A lot of people come to county council about what we do and don't approve, but a lot of this is determined administratively by the planning board and these other special review boards that are all bait up entirely by appointees from the county executive's office. For some of them, county council does get to kind of consent, but you don't really know a person, you haven't really selected them. So these are really administrative, executive branch dominated boards and processes with a lot of mechanisms for the land use office to protect it. Although we are trying to chip away at that a little bit. And of course, the historic review board, that does have another one. And the option, the other option to change these is through legislation. And as of last night, we are no longer beholden as a legislative branch of government to have to submit our land use legislation for review and comment from the Department of Land Use 14 days in advance. I tried to put on several occasions legislation in and the equivalent of what was a Destra veto in our Delaware General Assembly you could get from our land use office. I got this resistance when we first started working, when Jay and I first started working on some landfill ordinance and industrial ordinance. I got some pushback with that process with a Septic Ordinance. I got pushed back on it. I did draft an ordinance to look at density requirements, density setbacks. Whereas if you had a certain number of people within one mile of any site that has chemical store above certain quantities in accordance with the federal list of extremely hazardous substances, that you couldn't get a permit, couldn't get land use permission anymore. That one I struggled with to get through land use. So it was a really important step, I think, to release that burden so that we don't get slapped with, you know, undue comments that the public can't be part of. They can still do that now, once we introduce it, but you guys have the right to watch that process. The criticism I got was that, you know, then you're going to have to do a lot of amendments and change legislation. And I said, well, that's fine if I get good comments, but I think we should have an opportunity, whether it's a developer, whether it's a community member, whoever from the public, all of that is fair game as long as it's done in an open and transparent way, you know?
Hey Dave, we had a question. On the comprehensive plan, the question basically is, is the comprehensive plan where we can legally rezone properties and parcels?
So the comprehensive plan is where you should set a vision that says this needs to be rezoned. And once that comprehensive plan is adopted, it is the responsibility of council to pass those codes to implement it. Okay? So it's a kind of a two-step process, but the first step to do that comprehensive rezoning is to get that as the vision set in the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan shows the vision of where you want to be 20 years out. To get to that vision, that requires that you revisit your zoning. Okay? And you can't then implement it if you don't change the ordinances. So that's kind of a link and process. And here's how you want to think about it. You know, this land use planning is the way local governments really envision the future. Okay, this comprehensive planning is how we envision it. And then zoning is the mechanism by which we make sure it gets put into practice. But your chances of having that land rezoned without getting that as a recommendation in the comp plan are pretty tough. And, you know, I think sometimes I think a lot of our land use attorneys that work a lot in the county, they kind of like it the way it is because, you know, they get paid a lot of money to work through a rezoning. They know the process a lot better than others. They seem to have been pretty successful. You know, but that piecemeal approach is not how to do good, thoughtful, long-range planning that's fair and equitable to everybody. You know, the best way to do it is through comprehensive planning. Does that answer the question? I hope. Maybe, maybe not.
Let's keep going and I'm sure we'll have more questions as we go along.
Okay, this is an interesting one. This is kind of the generalized concept that the state of Delaware puts out about how comprehensive planning takes place, where the citizens can participate by feeding into their government body and feeding into the planning commissions that work with it. This is a little bit more challenging. For 55 of our 57 local governments in the state of Delaware, the executive branch and legislative branch are not separate. Kent County, Sussex County have a hired professional administrator, not an elected executive. Which means that when you go through this, the public can really get to all of their council members and force them to collectively work it through. It's not nearly as it's single focused as we are with an executive branch government. And we haven't really adopted that in our state or recognized that in our state law. The only two jurisdictions in the state of Delaware where local government is truly have separate bridges of government are Newcastle County and the city of Wilmington. Every other local government, every municipality in the two other counties do not have that separation. Even the mayors in every other jurisdiction other than Wilmington sit on the same, in the same meeting with their members of council. So it brings it together and does make it a lot smoother and streamlined, I think. So here's where we have those influences, those places where you can have it. And you can see which ones are dominated by the executive branch if you're trying to have input into it versus where we have some say in the legislature. Legislative branch, we can pass specific legislation. We do approve the plan at the end. We have to adopt it. But it's difficult as a council member to really have much direct input during the process. This is dominated very much by the executive branch. We try, they say they work with you, they do when it's convenient, they avoid you when it's don't. You know, and to give you an idea, for the southern Newcastle County master plan, a lot of my constituents came to me trying to get more input, very frustrated with the workshops, feeling that in the planning it was a predetermined outcome. I wrote over 20 pages of line-by-line comments that I submitted to our land use office months ago. I still haven't heard back, not a peep, not a specific on these yet. So you need to be ready for that. You need to press it, keep going and push hard for it. And right now is the time to really be looking at that process, how it's going to be set up and how the public is going to be allowed to engage in it. Okay? Really important to understand those challenges. Okay, so once you have your comp plan, once you have your zoning, we have a pretty complex development process. This is usually by right. You start out with a chance to go through and look at your exploratory plan, this is where all your major plans, more than five houses go through this. Minor plans do as well, but they don't have the same hearing requirements. And then our Department of Land Use does all the review of these. For the applicant submission to say you do or you don't meet the by right code requirements. Then they do have a public hearing, typically the first one. With the planning board, some of you have been to there, you get a. A couple of minutes. You know, I would encourage you to do what many of the development community does. And find ways to have more input to your legislators and to others along the way. You know, when a plan's coming up, I could tell you, we get it every time we call as a text from those developers. Every one of them, and I personally think to be honest with you that we should consider passing a restriction on County Council being allowed to use. Or hold cell phones during council meetings. Believe me, the texts are coming through. Some of it from community members, some of it from developers. But I think to be honest with you, we should, if we're giving two minutes or three minutes, that's all anybody should get. So how we address it is something for another day, but we have to look at our public hearing process, how they are dictated. If you get through that public hearing process, you go into your construction plans. That's really just to get the fine grades, make sure they're doing sediment stormwater, pretty perfunctory, then you get your record plan, it gets recorded. And you get to construction. Here are the opportunities where the public can at least very closely see what's going on. And be present at it, and in some cases have direct input on the record. The first is the Office of State Planning, they go through the preliminary land use service review. Where they look to see whether the state agencies are. Have any problems with the development plan. This is somewhat of a concerning process to me, although I think it's important for them to do it. Because they do not accept public testimony, and in fact. In my civic life many years ago, when they first started this, it was to be a confidential meeting, I filed with the Attorney General's Office against. The Office of State Planning, that they were state employees and they could not provide a free consulting, a free consulting services. To developers if the public couldn't be there, so you can at least sit in on them. When I go for my legislation, I now actually record it. They do not record it, they do not keep a record of it, they write comments later. And in my experience on my legislation, I feel that there are times that our Department of Land Use. Takes broad editorial interpretation rights and what they present back to the land use. To the planning board and to County Council, so I want that record. I would love to see the state law changed that requires the plus meetings be recorded and available to the public. That's beyond me, that's state law, that's not me. But as a legislator who has tried and had to go through this process. I believe it should be recorded and available to the public, I don't care if you don't allow public input. Directly on this, if you don't want it at that stage, but that record should be kept and made public. You do get an opportunity to planning board hearing, this is probably one of the most important ones other than. Quite honestly, the informal work you do with as many legislators as you can along the way. And the developers and others at that meeting, it is a very formal public opportunity to speak, it is on the record, it does have. Legal standing, but you want to make sure that you try and speak to the code and whether they do or don't meet the code. Because that's what's going to carry the day, if it's a by right development, unless you can point out where they violated the code. You know, you're just a gadfly, that's really important to know. They do have a planning board business meeting, the public can sit in, but the public can't speak and. We need to revisit these rules as well, I know on my. On some recent legislation, I had the Department of Land Use is allowed to speak on it as a sponsor of legislation. That I put in, I'm not allowed to speak, but the Department of Land Use is. And you know, it's not their legislation, it's mine, this is where we get into this. Failure to recognize a separation of power in Newcastle County. Because this is a tool in some ways for the executive branch to exert control. And and to direct the way things are being processed. Okay, then only if it is a special use, will there be another opportunity for public hearings, the ones in blue. The Historic Review Board, you have to go through that and get approval. For historic structures, whether or not you can tear them down or develop them. Resource protection areas for resource conservation, groundwater recharge areas, those type of things. And you can testify publicly. The Board of Adjustments, this is the one that now all heavy industry must go through because of 1946, which was the. One we put in to change heavy industry to special uses when we omitted the landfill. And the one that they're trying to remove that requirement, make make them back to being by right. I wish it were even stronger than Board of Adjustments, I wish it came directly back to council to be honest with you, but. We'll take what we can get. And rezonings, County Council does have to approve rezonings. And you can testify in front of council, we had a lot of testimony last night. And that testimony and discussion led to our decision to say we're not going to allow this rezoning. Then, of course, everything very late in the process, but everything does have an open County Council meeting. And a regular meeting, okay, your County Council Committee meeting. I will tell you, your most influence on County Council, if you want to testify at meetings, you need to come in during the day during our committee meetings. I will be very blunt with you. If they don't think the votes are there, in most cases. It will not make it to the regular meeting. And a lot of the fighting and discussion and debate that takes place has already taken place by the time we get to regular meeting. It's more difficult to change it if you're not engaged, so you really need to plan on trying to influence it and talk to council at our committee.
Dave.
Anyone have questions on those?
Yeah, quick question. How how early in the process or at what point would you say? It's common public knowledge to, you know, and a lot of these plans, when does that, when does the public usually become aware? And when would be the best time to really, you said, start individually reaching out or having community groups reach out to their. To the council or their council members?
You reach out as soon as you can, as soon as you can learn about it, the first official time is the time. Of which the administration has determined. That the exploratory plan and background is. Is ready for prime time and they put up a yellow sign. At that point, I wish they would do it earlier, you know, we did. Have a preliminary plan review in the process many years ago for community character under section 3.319. I fought like hell to keep it, that was taken out, that step. That was a step that was once in the process that fairly early in the process, it gave council, County Council full authority. To basically deny any plan that we felt was bad. Without all this by right consideration and all that stuff, and that was taken out of the code. To really make it a basically an automated process that says, well, we think our code is so good, we think our code is so wonderful and so accurate that. As long as you follow it, everything will be just peachy, so we have to approve it. That's kind of the assumption of U D C in my view right now. That assumes that you have just done. A really good job with the comprehensive planning and your implementation of the plan. I'm a little more skeptical than others, I think we need to do a better job on planning. Or and or rebuild a step in to have some more safeguards. I'm probably a minority. You know, I know the only one who I think strongly feels that way other than me is Dee Duro. Councilwoman Duro. Okay.
And another question, what can individuals do to support change in Newcastle County to reduce the amount of power that land use staff has? If that's an issue.
I personally think the planning board should be made up of appointees equally. Appointed from the council and from the executive branch for one. To provide some balance. You know, I think the more that they. Can get involved, then better, I think we need to reinstate the requirement that County Council has to approve the county attorney. The county attorney seems to think he reviews everything. But look, he serves strictly at the pleasure of the. Of the county executive. I've had him argue things wrongly on the floor for me about tiling of bills affecting the debate. And I think, you know, to be honest with you, we're trying right now, we used to have assistant attorney in County Council. I would like to have that position reinstated so that we can more directly. Create our own legislation, it's very frustrating to me that myself, Dee, John Cartier. Are writing a lot of legislation, but the vast majority of legislation that goes through council is written by the administration. I I'm just telling you that, and I can tell you that writing land use legislation and putting it in. You get some pretty hostile kickback. From the general manager land use in the administration, doesn't set me, but doesn't stop me, I don't care. But it's it's pretty hostile at times, you just keep fighting it out. So there are a couple of things, last night was a big one, to be honest with you, to have the 14-day review requirement removed. I do want to come back with legislation to, they still have a 14-day fiscal note requirement that needs to be removed as well. You know, I couldn't believe it on my septic ordinance, they put a million-dollar fiscal note on it. Because they said it would require inspections, which there was nothing about inspecting septic in the bill. So you know, it just needs to be cleaned up, those things can come later, you know, there are five formal opportunities. After the legislation is introduced. That the Department of Land Use can have input, but it all has to be done in an open public process.
Just a time check, we got about 15 minutes left.
Okay, then I'm going to keep moving. Oh, what's going on with my slides? Okay, let's shift gears a little bit, that was kind of a very. You know, high-level, precursory look at the land use labyrinth that you have to fight through. Now, let's talk a little bit about. Environmental justice and land use, because I think it's really over. Under addressed. I actually think land use is a much more critical part of environmental justice than actually things that are addressed in state and federal law. There was a shift in the 80s where all of our nonprofits, everything went to work in at the national level. You know, we had environmental link grow up with huge national environmental organizations that funded that way. And I think we lost sight of of the really local role that you have and how important land use is. You know, so these two questions, I mean, we can think about them a little bit. But with only 15 minutes, I'm going to go through a couple of slides to give you an overview of why. Hopefully of why considering land use for EJ is so important. And some ideas about the first steps we need to do to really begin to dig in and address them. Having worked on both federal and actually overseeing and implemented both federal and state environmental legislation. I was frustrated for years and years, you know, I mean, the most frustrating experience I had was, you know, when we put together our. Local plan in Southbridge, if anybody wanted to see it for the special area management plan, we got videos on it, we did. That came after I did the brownfield inventory, showed it was like unbelievable, the concentration of contaminants. But it was all land use driven and brownfield redevelopment was nothing more than one additional step in the land use process. So you gotta go through the whole land use process and then say, oh, whatever we're going to do with it, we clean this up for brownfield as well. Without understanding it, so let me talk a little bit about that. And then save some time for discussion about it. I want to emphasize that the next frontier, the remaining big frontier for environmental justice is in land use planning, okay? This is where we envision it, this is where you can make the most on-the-ground difference. It's affecting our communities, does anybody recognize where this photograph is? This is a little park in Southbridge. Okay, and you can see where we went in and I first woke up to this just to the right of here. In the public housing building, there was a daycare center, kids playing out there, we had to go in and do all the contaminant assessment of how polluted it was. After they'd been playing in it for years, that really frustrated me. But here's what the link is, you know, zoning really is the gatekeeper. For citing obnoxious sites, all of our LULU's, all of our undesirable land uses, okay, locally undesirable land uses. And even though zoning can do that. Environmental equity really has remained hidden. I can't say that we are actively and aggressively zoning like we did when we wanted to put the prison in Southbridge. We get some efforts to put industries in there, that's more because of the legacy zoning that we haven't corrected. That it is the active zoning. Most of these communities, you have to keep in mind, were initially segregated communities around these areas. A lot of those, few of those developments along Route 9 were. Built as homes for African-American, were veterans after World War II. Okay, they just happened to be next to industry because that's where we put them. And that type of stuff. You know, you have to recognize that heavy industrial zoning has changed very little since 1930. There's just a real hesitancy to look at it, the one place where we did it very successful. Successfully was over 30 years ago, working with Governor Peterson. Bobby Marshall was very involved and some others when we did the visioning for the riverfront. The city of Wilmington recognized that they didn't want all those nasty, polluting junkyards along the river, and they actively made them. Non-conforming uses to be phased out through what we call land use amortization. That say, okay, it's not going to happen tomorrow, we're going to zone it now. You're going to amortize and get what you can for the next 20 years with this business, and then you're out of there, buddy. Okay, and and that's the process that takes place. And all I hear now is, you know, jobs, 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 you know, I heard this last night with Croda, jobs, jobs, jobs. Yeah, it's important, but citing is also important and land use is key. You know, and you can point your finger, well, Denrick does or doesn't do it, but Denrick. Job is not to do comprehensive planning, looking at all the adjacent land uses, that is a local government responsibility. Under the state law, that's why these sightings require certification of local zoning. If you don't fix the zoning, you're not going to fix the environmental justice problems. When we have it next to these low-income communities, and we have been unwilling to do it. Forever, basically, although I'm hoping we're beginning some emphasis to be able to do it, this is where you're going to have a big impact with your comp plan, okay? You know, I already mentioned, these were really. Most of these land use patterns. You know, you call them environmental justice now, but most of them were when they were set up, when they were established. It was facially very racist, racially driven. Okay, we had segregation, we put, you know, even in Wilmington, the reason the east side. Is poorer and browner is because it was downstream and downwind. Okay, it's not a coincidence that all of this happened from what happened in the past. Okay, we now, and I will say, most of our policies now are. Not totally, but are a lot more race neutral, but we have never gone back to correct our zoning. For the past injustices, it just hasn't happened, that's why it's being perpetuated so much. A lot of talk about smart growth and all the wonders of smart growth. It has failed to address this issue, and it has failed miserably. Smart growth is, don't care where you are, it's gentrifying and often associated with displacement. Okay, gentrification in an underserved community can be good. As long as you don't have a lot of renters, because it increases value, it increases wealth. Most people, regardless, even low-income people. Like to be in nice communities and want to see that improvement. But it scares the crap out of you if you're not going to be able to afford to live there anymore, and it's going to push you out. So it's the displacement that you have to worry about, and and smart growth has failed to do it, so when I hear all of this. So when I hear all of this wonders of smart growth and hyping it, it's a lot more nuanced beyond than that. There are some really good things it does. There are some density things to do. There are some needs for some inclusionary zoning. I understand all of that, you know, we have to work on that. South of the canal, we need to proactively look at some areas that we can do ST zoning for higher density, but we gotta paint it where we have likelihood of public transportation and other services, not just say, we're going to do everything everywhere. It doesn't work that well. You end up with these failed gentrified communities like Whitehall, beautiful place, a little higher density in the middle of nowhere that, you know, because of the cost of transportation, transportation costs are higher than housing costs up there, so nobody can get an affordable house in those areas. Okay, and keep in mind, the focus of environmental justice continues to be on state and federal environmental laws and regulations, which are by design inherently limited in their ability to address local citing of pollution burdens. That is a local issue that is national. It is set in our federal laws, it is set in our state laws. Okay, you know, a lot of people don't realize, you know, with whatever problems he had, most of our really big environmental laws were passed by President Nixon. And you need to know that he tried to pass the National Land Use Act and got his butt headed to him on a platter. Then we came up with the Coastal Zone Act, it was a modified version of that. And that's because it's a local issue that we have to address. This is why I tell you that land use and how we deal with land use where we had these communities with environmental justice is critical and it is the critical remaining frontier to address environmental justice. And I would argue it is impossible to adequately adjust the issue of environmental justice without tackling smart land use planning that considers social and racial equality in it. Okay, we have to do that. It's just an absolute must. And for whatever reason, it just isn't something that we've had the focus that it deserves. Okay. So how am I doing on time? Am I running out quickly, aren't I? Okay. The stuff on the left, that big list of 12 things, those are the statutory requirements of a comprehensive plan under Delaware Code, any local government. This is particular for Newcastle County under the code, under 265, section 25, 2656G. Of interest is, and of interest to me is section 2656H, which says we can add elements. Okay, and the elements that we need to add in Newcastle County's comp plan were an additional element for environmental justice and the district, an additional one for hazard mitigation. We don't have a single word, we talk about sea level rise, we talk about, you know, chemical hazards, leaks like Crota, there's not a single word in our existing comprehensive plan about hazards. It's got to change and the social justice element. Okay, I hope to, I'm working now with Mike Migliore, I'm going to try. I will try to work collaboratively with my Department of Land Use, but I suspect I will be bringing forth an ordinance to mandate these. If you believe that what I have has any meaning, I hope that if I do that, that some of you will come out and really speak out about the need for it to get that into a plan. I don't know how else we're going to get it. I don't know how else we're going to force the discussions. And what I have told them with ordinance 20008, which is to try and remove the special use of heavy industry, that, look, some of the areas I understand, there might be some areas around Delaware City and other areas that should be by right, but the way to do that is through thoughtful comprehensive planning. So that's kind of, you know, what I think is one of the next big steps. Here are some of the specific actions, guys, that can be considered. These are ones that were part of the research I did when we were drafting 1904 six bans on specific types of polluting facilities. Okay. You know, when Jay came to me and said, you're the environmental guy, what the hell could I do? And I said, Jay, you could do what should have been done 30 years ago, change the goddamn zoning. It's that simple. And it's in your, it's in your purview. It's in your statutory capability. You know, there are a lot of broad policies to incorporate social environmental justice goals into a whole range of different activities, not just zoning, but where we cite infrastructure like we did with the Route nine library and other things that you need to consider. A lot of those capital investment studies and other things that we need to, to really think about. You know, the things that we do that promote minority businesses in some of these communities, make them a little stronger, how we affect traffic flows and all that kind of stuff. I already talked about these added elements that I think are critical if for no reason to force us to talk about them. Last night, I can tell you, I've had a few ordinances in that I got the feeling most of the council would just not like to have discussed because, you know, they were, they were racially laden, some policing tactics, some other stuff, but you know what? We gotta talk about it, you know, and we're not going to get it all at once. But silence is not an option. It's not an option in our council meetings. It's not an option in our comprehensive plan that guides our efforts. We gotta talk about it. We gotta address it. We gotta analyze it and we gotta be honest about it. Okay, there are other land use things that we can do. I talked about the amortization policy thing. That's when you make them nonconforming. Give them 20, 25 years, they can plan for their departure and where they want to go in a more fair and equitable way. And you can get into environmental review processes in Delaware. This just needs to be the county and Department of Natural Resources instead of pointing the fingers or fighting with each other for us to learn how to work together. We have some good review processes. They don't look at the broader aspects. Can we expand them? Can we collaborate? Can we do it? All of this starts with really robust public engagement, which is critical. I want to kind of end on this one. This is just a classic paper by Sherry Ornstein, paper I review regularly. One that I could send if you haven't read it, it really talks about the levels of public participation. And I would argue that most of our land use processes get to the height, the level of informing and consultation at the best. We very rarely have true partnership and how we do these type of things. This came out back during the war on poverty when we were investing real money and trying to rebuild and redevelop communities. We have learned time and time again that that engagement is so, so critical. But I guess, having been a bureaucrat in an agency for 30 years, you kind of get a perspective that I'm the expert. They need to listen to me because I'm the expert without realizing there are different types of expertise. There is a technical expertise for land use planning. There's a technical expertise for environmental management. And there is a local quality life expertise that only community members can bring to the table. And we gotta figure out how to do a better job of that. You know, we can't just start out when you come in and say, well, you just don't understand. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix you. I'm going to give you a little therapy because you're just a crazy advocate, you know.
We have a few questions, Dave, I want to get to.
Okay, I'll just stop there.
So the copy of Dave's slides will be made available when we share the YouTube on our website. We always embed any resources that the presenter wants to make available to everybody. So that answers that nice and easily. Nate, we're going in back reverse order here. Does the planning board, real quick, does the planning board have any power? My understanding is that the land use can ignore their vote.
Uh, yeah, and they make them advisory and, you know, I have, I don't think that's, I think it should be more binding. You know, or at least have the equal vote. The one we voted on last night that we denied had been, they had a split vote, which meant it was denied by planning board for the rezoning. And then land use recommended that move forward. So it is advisory. I do believe most of us on council do try to take planning board recommendations seriously and thoughtfully regardless of what comes out of it. But no, it is advisory.
How would you incorporate environmental and social justice into transit friendly, walkable, bikeable development?
If you can get it, if you have them, you know, I mean, anytime you can get closer to having transit, the reality is that we don't have it everywhere, you know, and I struggle with this every day south of the canal because under UDC, we never stepped up to have ST zoning in a few areas. In fact, what we did in Southern Newcastle County, where this is going to apply more than anywhere else, is that the county went in and bought land and protected land all the way around Middletown with the intent of blocking annexation. And if you really want to accomplish that true goal, you really want to have that type of development closer to your towns, your services, your core density of where you can get transportation hubs. So, you know, we're looking closely. I mean, part of the idea of where we placed our library was recognizing that it was the one place that we could have a central hub. It is also located to the, next to the only place where we have a concentration of subsidized housing and other things largely from Middletown. Keep in mind, other than a little bit of inclusionary zoning, we have, and that's at 80% of AMI, we haven't built any affordable housing south of the canal since the UDC was passed, none. Other than some inclusionary zoning from workforce housing. So it's a lot more challenging. And I think we have to look at those areas. To be honest with you, where we're putting Water Farm two would be the ideal location to have had some of, you know, that more equitable type of planning. We can get a little bit more equitable with some of our developments, you know, but my feeling is that some of it, I just have to recognize that where we think it's all transportation. Mine is going to change it. It's a tough one. It's a really tough one because of half dependency and the limited space we have due to some of the, some of the things that have happened that we had not addressed through comprehensive planning. All that sounds really good. I think the best I can tell anybody trying to do that is we have to really find those last couple of locations. Newport that has a chance for a train station and a hub and for some redevelopment would be a good one. Star Campus, potential because of the rail line has a chance for the hub. Working with the town of Middletown where we did put the library where we're working, we have a chance for a central hub. We may get a little bit of opportunity to do some of that down in the Townsend area cooperatively. Where we're trying to work now to allow some of that growth in concentric circles. But the UDC now that tries, is trying to make these big developments out in large rural areas, I just, you can get a little bit of walking within the community, but you're not getting that intermixing. You know, and actually we're, our code is actually, I think, making more isolated communities where they just don't come together and don't talk as much. So it's a tough one. I don't have all the answers to it, but you know, it's one that we are struggling with and trying to figure out.
One that we can address in the comprehensive plan, correct?
Well, I hope we can find a few locations where we can do it well and just recognize and not spend a whole lot of time where it's, where the pattern has been set to the point that you can't redirect it.
We got more kind of a personal question, I feel like, but I'll ask it anyway. Are you supportive of establishing an industrial review board at the county level with members who have industrial experience? We really got, I'll take the question off live if you need to.
No, no, I could, I could. A little bit of. I can answer it well. And, you know, I don't think an industrial control review board is a county jurisdiction, is a county issue. I think our issue is zoning. Okay? And I think we sort the zoning out and where we do and don't have it. You know, Denrick can handle the rest of the stuff for industry. And, you know, I mean, I've heard this argument, but I've, you know, I've worked at both and I know what it is. You know, boards are not always as efficient, as efficient as we think. You know, if we sort out the zoning, I think we will do what we can within our jurisdiction and be able to do it well.
And perhaps we need to have an entirely additional livestream on how we can fight for EJ and through the processes of Denrick as well. So there's certainly some changes that need to be made at the county and certainly other changes that need to be made at the state processes as well. So Dave, we are over our time, so I do, we're going to have to wrap up here. I do appreciate you though, taking the time today and appreciate the over 30 people that have watched this throughout our presentation here. The Delaware chapter of the Sierra Club is committed to continuing, working on supporting the communities that have just been impacted for generations now on poor zoning and poor planning, particularly when it comes to industrial uses being cited right next to their homes and communities. We are committed to staying in that fight. And if you would like to work on that issue, we encourage you to, you could reach out to me. My email is Dustin, D U S T Y N, period, Thompson, T H O M P S O N, at sierraclub.org. This fight is about lifting up the communities that are impacted and making sure that we're lending any resources we can to support their fight, that they've been vocally fighting for a long time and a lot of great work there. We need to support them. And with that being said, I want to thank everybody again for tuning in. Thank you, Dave. Everybody have a great night.
Thanks a lot.